To the left of where you have given the easement for the new sewer treatment facility and created a dam, and in that dam we put what's called a ware, which is a water, it releases the water slowly. There is no mechanical function to it. It is just a large concrete structure, and it's designed in such a way that they can, when they're designing that, they're designing it to slowly release water over time. So in the normal day-to-day operation, day like today, it would have no impact on the stream. When we had the large rains that we've had the last couple of months, you would see water retention or detention being held in that stream. But we have to plan for this for that hundred-year impact storm, which is what you're seeing in this image, is that light blue area. That's saying we would take up to about two acres of the farm and retain water on that two acres for about thirty-six hours. And over the course of that thirty-six hours, we'd slowly release it into the stream so that it's not flooding the neighbors down below, but slowing it down enough so that we can push water from the site into the stream at a normal rate. Again, not impacting the neighbors below any more water than would be expected than we're allowed to. And all this is then is that you as a property owner are giving up a portion of your property to say, we will hold the water back so as to not impact our neighbors down below. We proposed to walk through this with the consultants, and you're seeing, you know, there's a large, large light blue area, that's that hundred-year storm. That darker blue area is that storm you'd expect about every fifteen to twenty years. And then you're seeing our dam in the weir situation that we would propose as being also the crossing to get across the creek onto that side of the property. At the worst, at that hundred-year storm, we'd be looking at retaining somewhere in the four to five-foot depth of water for up to thirty-six hours. So because of that, we need to fence in the area so that it doesn't become a hazard to the community and then that storm and something, someone get access to the water. So we would recommend fencing, and not just a cattle fence, but more of a six-foot chain link fence, this portion of the property in. It could still be used for the farm to hold cattle. They could still cut hay on this farm and that. It's just a preventive measure that isn't a large kind of prisoness-style fence. It's just a standard chain link like we would do on any of our other properties. It gives you a buffer to keep folks out of the site. It still maintains the farm for general use, middle of summer, cattle could be out there, hay could be cut on that. But that early spring, late fall storms that we get, we'd source water retention. Doing this means that we don't need to build any underground water retention, detention, and we can release our water from the site into the creek. It won't impact your neighbors. And instead of having to budget about a million dollars for that, we're budgeting about two-hundred-thousand dollars for that. It's a significant savings that on its day-to-day operation, you won't see any change, a normal storm, you'll see less impact on your neighbors than you're seeing now. That's the plus of this. We're seeing, or have seen, early on in the project that y'all are aware that some of the neighbors down below you have, are seeing some water issues. This fixes that, prevents that from happening, and makes it better than the day when y'all walked on the site a few years ago since the construction. That's our most recent update that we have. Of course, we're always welcome to questions and concerns.
Did you look at the, creep is one thing, but the road grid, say, box back up another also? The cove over under the road is certain size, and how much do they carry? They, will they carry any amount? The cove over under the road?
The cove will cross the road?
Oh, it goes across the road.
So that is sized for the twenty-five-year storm, how the, how the state sizes those coves. That means every twenty-five years, we may see water or trash come over the road and dissipate out. And that means we have to get out there and clean it. But that's the way all the state highways are now designed, so that's the same formula that we did. We don't want to over-design, put in a large structure that's not necessary for the day.
Just wanted to make sure that what we were releasing, that twenty-five-year range capacity was, was.
We will, in their estimates, and they're running all calculations, they will take what would be considered a twenty-five-year storm, and it now becomes a fifty-year storm because we're going to retain water. So we're really improving your downstream neighbors' conditions and not impacting them with future development because we're retaining much more water than we're actually putting into the stream. So it's just a matter of y'all giving up that, or giving access to that two-acre farm.
Have you been in conversation with our egg people about the potential loss of the two acres?
You know, we had, as soon as we, this was shared with us, we had a meeting with high school staff to make sure that this would fit. And one of the things that we found out is that area is not heavily utilized right now, so it's not a pullback from something. It's, it's just, and as Brad just shared a second ago, it would still be usable like , you know, they could still have access to that, particularly in the summer and when it's a drier period of time.
Anybody else?
I'm sure that the sewer easement was being used anyway. I think they, they started to dig and found rock, so they decided it was easier to go and push up some trees that they didn't want to get into, the trees because it was going to be extensive. And then they decided when they hit the rock, it was going to be a less extensive if they just went ahead and got rid of the trees. So I'm pretty sure that the easement is even going to be disturbed.
Well, the easement, I was down there today, part of my job, handling a conflict in parking situation. But as a, as it goes, they're, they're pretty much getting close to finishing it down there.
Exactly.
And so they did have, they found it was a lot easier, as you said, to stay away from the rock and move it back over and get rid of the trees. And so they've done a pretty good job on that right now.
They may have found the only spot on the site that doesn't have rock. We have completed.
I'm amazed that they hit rock in Garrett County. I didn't think that was a single rock in Garrett County.
They have completed an initial, all the borings are done. We've got an initial report back on that. Just about everywhere over the site, we hit rock in between five and eight feet more current grades. So, which we've budgeted for, we've known about, and knew this was going to be part of the condition, so it's not a surprise to us. But it will be an eventful construction period as far as, there'll be some booms and some shouts and some bangs.
I remember as a, as a young man, sitting in eighth grade class on the football field side where they were doing construction on the, what's now the middle school, after lunch, and watching them start the construction on the, on the new high school. It was a learning process. It was eventful on the days that they did some blasting and you could watch that steel mat. I was, they did hit rock there too. I was being a little bit suspicious, saying that it was a.
Climate can expand the mess as necessary. We will work closely with the high school staff to ensure that when they do have to begin blasting, it won't be during key instructional periods. So we'll work around their schedules to make sure that we're not impacting the education of our, because that's our key here. Nothing worth building if it's not about the education.
All right, anybody else?
One thing, just jumps out, let me jump out real quick. When you do get into blasting, is it, I guess, kosher to call the central dispatch or the police department, say, if you hear any big booms right now, to be alert?
Yeah. And they're pretty, I mean, blastings came a long way. They're pretty, they always disappoint me anymore. A weight and weight, expect something that's usually just like.
I worked at one time, totally after I got out of high school. We would blast a hundred, eighty to a hundred holes, seventy-five to eighty, big, big, solid limestone, and shoot them all in seventy-five. Let's put it this way, if you hear a rock whistling, you better be behind something. But it, it could be eventful, and we had to, like Coach Herb said, we did have to put a crew out on a, a joining road to stop traffic to keep, because at one time, I think there was a little rock about to spin around, get lengthened in the roadway. And from that time on, there was a crew there blocking traffic.
Yeah.
But otherwise, everything was uneventful, except for the few whistlers that went over. But it was, yeah, it was a lot of fun back then, so they're taking all the fun.
In my experience.
Well, maybe we'll get to see some of those personal stuff. But I think we'll get to rock.
Okay, anybody else? All right, let's move on to.
So the final report I have is what you get each month, and that's the opportunity to see the hires and resignations that we've had, so that's posted for you. So we can move on to reports.
Okay, reports. So Chris, all board members got to leave with Stacy?
All of them, but they have access to that information. So again, it's available here right now. So if you have any questions, happy to take them. Stacy's online if we need her.
You got any big questions? Okay, let's move on to bond potential update.
Your bonding potential from the, between February and March has increased by about seven-hundred thousand dollars. There was a dip in the interest rates at that point in time, and obviously we'll continue to track this for you moving forward. I talked with Kelly yesterday after, or I'm sorry, Kelly, this morning after the Fed hike yesterday to make sure that I could answer questions if you had them tonight. What happened with them is not a one-to-one comparison for you because what you will be looking at is long-term lending as opposed to short-term, which is what the Fed impacted. She did ask me to tell you that there's not been a recent sale, so she can't draw a comparison, but they have one in the next ten days that will be used to give you advice based on the next one that comes to you in April.
All right, thank you, sir. And item C, this bill is presented, I assume all board members have had an opportunity to look over that. You don't have any questions on that? We'll move on to item four, which is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve everything under the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Ms. Davis seconded. Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by the left of hand. Thank you very much. The consent agenda then is adopted, which brings us to item five, the action agenda. And the first item on the action agenda is to approve work on Lancaster Elementary floor tiles.
Yeah, we've indicated to you while we're working on these other projects that we'll continue to move forward with some of the other projects that we know that you're interested in and that we need to address. We were able to get KDE to grant us permission to do this work as maintenance work as opposed to new construction, so we don't have to do a BG one on that. We're currently pulling bids around that. We may have to phase it, but we're going to see if we can't bid the whole thing, if possible. That may mean an RFP. What we're asking for tonight is your permission to move forward with this, even though we're not putting exact numbers in front of you today. To do the, the hallways downstairs as a, just to give you an estimate, we have bids between twenty-one and twenty-two thousand dollars to do that work. And we will do the hallways first so that we can align those tiles with the classrooms more easily than doing the classrooms and bringing it out that direction. So what I'm asking for and recommending is that you approve that floor tile replacement at Lancaster Elementary based on the information that we're able to get back through the bid process.
Thank you, Mr. Stoll. You've heard super test recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
All right.
Second.
Second. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions? All in favor, let me know by the left of hand. All board members were in favor. Item A is approved. Item B is to approve work on the strike zone.
So a couple of, well, maybe a month or so ago, we had some looks at the backside of the, the strike zone and to, we had building inspector go take a look, and he said we're safe there, but we can improve that area with a little bit of work. So again, we're working on bids for that and improving that area for a couple of reasons. Number one, next year in the fall, when we begin this construction process, we're going to have to relocate some things from the high school. Mr. Anderson will have to move his daytime program that uses the weight room currently to another location. Football will have to move, so we can take advantage of that. We can also make this area available to our NCDD or JROTC program as we move forward, and it's not a significant hit to us financially to do that. We also are going to look at the area outside of that to see if we can improve some area there for practice facilities while the other facilities are gone. As you all know, when the new, when the construction begins, we will lose the, the field house that's currently at the high school for a two-year period. And so we have to relocate individuals for school purposes and then for athletic purposes as well. So we don't have those bids in front of you yet, but we're gathering like we are at Lancaster. So what we're asking for is permission to begin that process of improvement in those two locations at the, at the strike zone.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the superintendent recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Mr. Stoll made a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Davis seconded. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by the left of hand. All board members were in favor. Item B is approved. Item C is to approve Whittaker Bank scoreboard donation.
Whittaker Bank has asked to make a donation of a scoreboard to our current field at Die House State. They're aware that we may be moving to another location, and so they fully understand that that may occur. They provided a proposal. We've run it through your board attorney to make sure that it meets all of the expectations. Basically, what they're going to do is donate to us eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents for a scoreboard and replacement of the filming tower that's at the current location. And what we ask for in compensation is the ability to place their name on both of those things, which we're glad to do. So we're asking you to approve that scoreboard and tower donation from Whittaker Bank.
All right, again, you've heard the superintendent recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll sleep.
Lamb made a motion. What's your name, sir?
I don't know. I've been called Bill, haven't I?
Mr. Perry seconded. You have any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by the left of hand. All board members were in favor. Which brings us to item D.
After watching what's occurred this, this year with NTI at the state level, there was some conversation that was held and went back to our calendar committee, and we're asking you to reconsider the calendar that we established earlier this year and move back to a calendar that more closely aligns what we were doing prior to COVID. If you'll recall, when we started with the issues of COVID, we switched to a schedule that began later in August, which reduced the number of instructional days, but it gave us time with our teachers to prep them for what distance learning might look like. As time has gone on, we've recognized that we're transitioning back to what was more common, and by making this change, it gives us some flexibility if we have bad weather, but it also gives us six days back with our students. And so we don't think that that can be a bad thing for us. So despite the fact that this was not the first choice, we do now think it's probably the best choice. It won't be the most well-received by everyone involved, but we do think it's the best choice at this point. Again, we did take it back to the calendar committee. If you have any questions about that, Mr. Bowlen is here, he operates that for us. But my recommendation is that we revise the calendar to the earlier start in August.
You've heard the superintendent recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Question.
Sir.
It's a bit easier on me if I, if I can be, maybe to ask a question. What, what is the starting date of?
I'm pulling up calendar right now. It's here. August tenth, I believe. It's there.
August ninth should be transition day. August tenth.
We gave six days to start two, over two weeks later, or earlier. We gave, we gave six days back to start two weeks earlier?
Well, so a lot of it just depends on, on where we were starting at originally, we started on that Tuesday. It's probably, I don't know the exact when that begins.
Well, we started, we started at what, about the twentieth something?
The twenty-third, I believe.
This year, we were starting on the mass, so that's about two weeks.
Two weeks.
To get six days back.
And well, what it does for us is, is in the middle of the year, if we do experience bad weather like we have before, we have a little more flexibility to where we don't have to cram everything into the end of May and really butt up into June.
Are we looking at losing NTI days or?
Sir.
Looking at losing NTI days, which you don't have like that.
True. And you know, since we're, we only have ten NTI days with a bad weather winter, it could put us in a bad spot. So if we have to have snow days, we have plenty of days, plenty, we have more days to work.
Anybody else?
So for instance, this year, we.
We talked about three weeks, three ways for bad weather. But we could get out some more around the middle of May.
It's not just.
If everything went well, we could get out in the middle of May instead of the end of May.
Sure. It's not just for bad weather. We're talking now, obviously, if another spike popped up, if we were to have flu, if we were to have any type.
Well, we're going to have different strains of COVID forever because it's an easy way for people to impose their will.
It just gives us more flexibility.
Okay, we've got the.
So just real quickly, in front of you is the end too, because you were talking about the change at the front, but there's a change at the back too. So it ends the year earlier, which is what Mr. Bowlen was referencing, to give us that flexibility. So we add six days for instructional purposes, and it cuts off a week at the end in case we have to cut the time there.
Okay, we've got the cart full of orders. Do I have a motion to approve the calendar revision?
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar revision.
Dr. Lamb made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart seconded. Now, is there any other discussion or comments?
Well, I might give a few more questions. I asked a question before we voted.
Okay, that's fair. All in favor, let me know by the left of hand. All four? Motion is approved. Item E is to approve joining the opioid tax action lawsuit, Mr. Stoll.
All of you received an email a few weeks ago indicating that there is a lawsuit currently in, in works to try to bring money to school districts to offset the challenges that you will face, that we will face moving forward with students who are born addicted. And this offer is at no cost to you. Your board chair has met with the attorney that was involved. We've spoken with the attorney who represents the Ejeption County Public Schools, who's a former Garrett County graduate, and they're part of this. We've also spoken with our board attorney to make sure that this is a good decision. So what we would like to do tonight is approve a resolution where we join the opioid lawsuit. There's no cost to you. If there is recouping of funds, that's what will be the attorney's fees for this. If there's no recouping of funds, then you have no cost to them either. So in front of you, or available to you, not in front of you, but available to you, is this resolution. And I'll ask for your indulgence on this while I read this resolution because this is what we'll be asking you to approve. Whereas this Board of Education is aware that since nineteen ninety's, the pharmaceutical industry has manufactured, distributed, and marketed a variety of opioid pain medications for general use in the treatment of chronic pain conditions, resulting in such medication being the most widely distributed drugs in the United States history. And whereas the manufacturer, the manufacturer, distribution, and marketing of these opioid drugs has resulted in catastrophic widespread consequences for the people of this nation, including addiction, overdoses, developmental disabilities in children, death, and major expenditures of money. And whereas the Board of Education believes the school districts of this nation, including this school district, have suffered significant damages as a result of this national opioid epidemic, including expenditures of public funds to address the impact of this epidemic on students, teachers, and other staff, and the taxpayers of this district. And whereas a number of other school districts have filed or, or willing, will be filing legal claims as part of a multi-district litigation for the purposes of pre-trial proceedings, including potential settlements of claims, and are seeking to become class representatives in the MDL and in an effort to be part of the proposed negotiations, class seeking compensation for the impact of this epidemic on the named school districts. Now therefore, the Board of Education of Garrett County hereby authorizes the following, and that is joining this lawsuit.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Perry made a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Davis seconded. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by the left of hand. All board members were in favor. Item E is approved, and item F is to approve the purchase of a school bus.
We'd like to request that you allow us to purchase a school bus. This year, we're only requesting one. It's a seventy-two passenger international, a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. My recommendation is you can approve this purchase.
You've heard the superintendent recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Do you have any other purchases?
Thank you. Ms. Davis made the motion. Do I have a second? Perry seconded. We have any questions or comments?
And this is going to be with school funds, not brand two.
Yeah, this is these good funds, I believe.
It's not.
Exer.
It's not.
It's not Exer. You're thinking of Exer?
Yeah, there'll be a transfer of funds. There'll be a transfer of funds into general account to pay for this.
Another problem, I think, we've all.
No, this is our funds.
Yeah. I think it's this way to go with this, this purchase is in this town.
Anybody else? All in favor, let me know by the left of hand. All board members were in favor. Item F is approved. Item G is to approve, approve an MSD teacher and parent educator for Garrett County Middle School for the twenty-two, twenty-three student.
Next year, we know that we will be over cap in this classroom setting, so legally we need to make these steps to do that. We currently anticipate anywhere from eleven to thirteen students, and the cap is ten. This will be funded through IVDA, so it's my recommendation that we create and then post and hire an MSD teacher and parent educator for Garrett Middle School for the next school year.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
You've heard made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dr. Lamb seconded. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please let me know by the left of hand. All board members were in favor. Item G is approved. Item H is to approve Seal of Arts Excellence for Garrett County High School.
So the Kentucky Department of Education has created a new opportunity for senior, or for students at the high school called the Seal of Arts Excellence, and our high school would like to participate in that. What it is, in effect, it's like a pathway for the visual and performing arts. And the high school has decided how, the way that they would like to look at this is visual arts, band, and theater, and it can be added to over the course of time. The high school proposes an evidence-based, evidence standards-based checklist and a performing arts resume. So if, if a student meets this requirement at the, at graduation, they'll have this seal for their diploma. Districts all across the state can make this decision or not. I would recommend that you do this as an opportunity for students who are involved in arts to be recognized in a new way.
All right, you've heard the superintendent recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Everybody made a motion.
Perry seconded. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by the left of hand. All board members were in favor. Item H is approved. Item I is to approve BG one revision on the middle school intercom project.
So this is a technical revision. It doesn't change money in any fashion, but in order to make sure we get to this spot where we can finalize that BG five, we have to go back and revise the BG one. So it's my recommendation that you approve this revision for the GMS intercom project.
You've heard the superintendent recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Ms. Davis made a motion. Mr. Hart seconded. We have any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by the left of hand. All board members were in favor. Item I is approved. Item J is to approve a BG five for the middle school door project.
BG five's closed out the projects that we're working on. This was a project that was completed last year, so we can tie this up now. And it's my recommendation that you approve this BG one for the door project.
All right, you've heard the superintendent recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Dr. Lamb made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry seconded. Any questions or comments? All in favor, let me know by the left of hand. All board members were in favor. Item J is approved. Item K is to approve a BG five for the Kent County project.
Same thing as the previous one. This closes out this project. These two BG fives together will, will see a return of about twenty thousand dollars to the district because those funds were retained and were left available to you. So it's my recommendation you approve this BG five.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the superintendent recommendation. Mr. Perry made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dr. Lamb seconded. Any questions? All in favor, let me know by the left of hand. Item K is approved. Item L is executive session. So what we're going to do, I'm going to have a motion to go into executive session, and if y'all want to hang around and see what comes up from this executive session, you're more than welcome to. than welcome to, but, uh, if I have a motion to go into executive session.
I'd like to motion to go into executive session.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hart's seconded, all in favor, let me know by lifting hand. Thank you. Thank you all very much, appreciate you being here.